Ladies and gentlemen, welcome. I am Neil Williamson with the Free Enterprise Forum. Thrilled you're here. We are recording this. It'll be posted to the website at some point next week, I anticipate. But the event is the goal of the City Council Democratic Primary Candidate Forum is to provide a venue for these candidates to speak about many issues. We're going to have, we do have cards and pens in each of these corners. If you have a question you would like asked, feel free to write it down and bring it up here and put it in our executive producer's handy dandy mailbox. And Blues Clues reference for anyone that doesn't know. But we are thrilled you're here and I'd like to welcome our sponsor from the Hurrican Group, Rebecca Evans.
Thank you so much. I'll just take one second in case you didn't feel welcome enough. I'll be your welcome 2.0. Just wanted to say thank you for being here. Horgan is a commercial construction and development group. And one of the most important things we care about in addition to building relationships and buildings is building communities. And that's done foundationally with something like what we're doing today, community conversations and candidate conversations. So grateful to be here and I'm going to let you all take it away.
Oh, hello. Well, gosh. Oh, I am? I don't know. Is this separate? Oh, sorry. Well, you got to do a Blues Clues reference, so I thought I'd update it. I'm Sean Tubbs. I'm the president and publisher of Town Crier Productions, been a journalist here for 20 years. Glad to be here for this candidate forum with these three here. Just want to say, just a shout out to the Free Enterprise Forum. This is the 20th anniversary of me and Neil partnering on these types of things, which I think is kind of cool. We are, but you know, I'm trying to be hip with that thing. So without, let's get right to it. We're going to go through opening statements first and the first statement, the first opportunity goes to Juan Diego Wade.
Thank you. My name is Juan Diego Ricardo Wade. I'm current mayor of Charlottesville. And a little bit about myself, I grew up in Richmond, Virginia. I have had three brothers, two brothers and two, three sisters. We called ourselves the Black Brady Bunch and I'm Bobby for anyone that was interested to know. I went to Norfolk State University and came to Charlottesville to get my masters in urban environmental planning. And as part of my thesis, I work with the local NAACP on a national program. And I got to meet many of the individuals, African Americans in this community that shoulders I now stand on. And I remember meeting them. It was this restaurant in Barracks Road called, I think, Ken Houston or, but I remember going there and meeting and talking about it. I'm hearing about things like Vinegar Hill and things. And at the time, I didn't know I would be coming back to this community. When I did after graduating in 1990 and working in Fairfax County as a transportation planner for one year, I came back here in 1991 to be the transportation planner for Albemarle County. And, and when I came back, I quickly got reconnected to those individuals in this community that I spoke with, people like Eugene Williams and someone who I still meet with now on a regular basis to get their insight. But I met these individuals. Many of them have transcended. But I learned so much for them and they contribute a lot to my leadership to those individuals. But I got involved with this community at a very granular level and working with nonprofits mentoring. And then ascending to being on board leadership. I just learned so much about this, about this community. And you know, really having stopped since 1991, being involved and connected to this community, whether it's serving on the school board for 16 years, being president of the NAACP, of the United Way. I was really involved at different levels, being president, chair of the school board. My time as the county planner, I did bus transit, planning sidewalks, bike lanes. I did all of those things for the county and I continued to serve. One of the things that I will bring to this community is commitment to service to the community. And thank you very much.
Thank you. And now the opportunity for an opening statement goes to Jen Fleischer.
Hi, my name is Jen Fleischer. I am a public health program officer at our local health department. And I was the lead manager for the COVID vaccination campaign during the pandemic. My work now at the health department involves the community health needs assessment and the community health improvement plan. So that means I work every day to improve the health of our residents and the residents of the surrounding counties. So we work with a regional group to improve access to the things that really improve health at its root level. So that's transportation, housing, the environment, schools. We know that these components are the leading influencers of individual and community health. And our work in partnership with UVA Health and Centerra is leading the way to create a healthier community for Charlottesville residents. I moved here 24 years ago and I'm a resident of the Belmont neighborhood. And I look forward to bringing the skills and expertise I've learned being a regional leader to city council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now the opportunity goes to Brian Pinkston to ask an opening statement.
Hi, I'm Brian. Brian Pinkston. I've been on council for three and a half years. Almost getting close to that. Came to this area in 2004 to go to grad school like the mayor. In 2015, we moved into the city. And I've really enjoyed living in the city. It's been a great place for us and our family. In 2016, I got involved in local politics. The thing that was the sort of approximate cause for that was, were things that were going on at the federal level that caused me concern. And I felt like I could contribute at a local level. My background and career has been in project management. I like to say that project managers put people, resources and ideas together to get things done. And that's what I've done in my career. I work at UVA in facilities management. And I think that's what I brought to city council. When, when Juan and I joined city council, it was a time of real instability for a lot of different reasons, but city council was not in a good way. The city manager's office was not in a good way. And it was really a point of, I think of intervention and the two of us together with our colleagues on council and others as well, we've overseen a real turnaround at the level of city council, but also at the level of city manager's office. We now have a really sharp, strong city manager in Sam Sanders. He's doing great work. He's in turn hired a whole range of people that work for him. And we now have people in the city manager's office who really want to be in Charlottesville and they're making real contributions. I, I believe that everything begins, almost everything begins with people. And to that effect, we've, we've made generational investments in our people and our staff at the city. We now have collective bargaining agreements. We have a modern pay structure. Again, we're bringing in people from professionals who want to be in Charlottesville who are making great contributions. One of the things that I'm most proud of in this next budget is that we're actually hiring a concrete crew, not, not just a crew that's on contract, but actually hiring people within Public Works who can pour concrete for sidewalks. And I think that is emblematic of the changes that we've been able to make and we're going to continue to make. We're going to move beyond just talking about things and we actually have not only money now to do things, but also the right people in the right places.
Thank, thank you. We're now going to move into our formal questions. The first question will go to candidate number two. We did draw numbers out of a hat and that is Ms. Fleischer. Planning philosophy. For years, comprehensive plans in both Albemarle and Charlottesville have called for a dense urban area connected by multimodal transportation. Land use policies are shifting to provide more people living in the city and Albemarle's urban ring. How would you diagnose the ability of local and regional government to deal, to deliver the matching infrastructure, transportation, education and public safety?
I think we have a lot of the foundational pieces in place to tackle regional and citywide transportation and housing and public safety with the new zoning code that's in place and Albemarle County's commitment also to increase affordable housing within the urban ring. We will be working alongside each other to incentivize the developers and the homeowners to build responsible and affordable housing at scale and encouraging that, encouraging those incentives and those relationships with developers and community partners to make that happen is one strategy that we can leverage. The ability to improve transportation, both with John and Kat, will be a key piece to really solidifying that affordable housing and that density. So allowing folks regardless of their mobility needs or age to get where they need to go. So working together to improve those relationships, increase our drivers and evaluate the system as partners. The county in particular, in the urban ring with the city to lower wait times and increase ridership and frequency as we go in order to balance out the costs of, of transit and to allow more folks to live closer to the urban ring in the downtown centers and then access that transit. And the public safety piece is also influenced by that transit and can be leveraged in that strategy by helping to keep police officers and firefighters and other public safety professionals, paramedics within the urban ring. And so that's a method of preparedness for any future emergency needs and also a method for now, a long-term investment that can improve the relationship and the health of our residents now.
Great. Mr. Pinkston, for years, the comprehensive plans in both Albemarle and Charlottesville have called for a dense urban area connected by multimodal transportation. Land use policies are shifting to provide more people living in the city and Albemarle's urban ring. How would you diagnose the ability of local and regional government to deliver the matching infrastructure, transportation, education and public safety?
I think I would diagnose it as a work in progress. I think that we, particularly in Charlottesville, I want to speak for the county, we're pretty good at coming up with aspirational plans. And what I've been really excited to be a part of in this last council is, is taking some concrete action, particularly with the zoning ordinance. That is a very real tangible document that took a lot of time and effort to pull across the finish line. A lot of people involved in it, but I was, I was happy to be a part of the group that voted for it. I think another piece is transit. Again, we continue to talk about transit and we're getting a lot of good pressure right now from people like Impact, for example, to actually reduce wait times and actually hire more human beings to be in these positions. So the point I guess I'm trying to make is I feel like we are, we are moving from a perspective of talking about things to actually getting things done. It's still slower than I would like, but I'm optimistic. I also think that there's, I'm on the MPO, a number of other boards. There are definitely real problems in our, our community around infrastructure and things like that. But I also feel like people might worry too much about that a bit. For example, I'm on the Ravanna Board. The Ravanna Board has, has a really amazing capital improvements progress, program that is in progress. And our water supply here, our wastewater treatment capacity, things like that are excellent. I would put this up against any peer. The same thing, I would say the same thing in terms of what we're planning to do with the transit system. Our road network certainly needs some work. The, the goal there though is we're wanting to get people out of their cars and find other ways to get around. I, I grew up in the deep south where a place where it was all car centric. And I've had to change my paradigm thanks to people like Natalie Oshrin, for example, who's, who's been pushing me on this. But if we can get people out of cars and onto buses, onto bicycles and things like that, that is another part of the strategy. The other thing is that we're being responsive. A good example is with the school board and their recent redistricting of their schools, I think was a very practical, pragmatic way to rebalance the system without building new schools. So I think there's more capacity to get more done than we, than we actually think.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wade, for years, comprehensive plans in both Albemarle and Charlottesville have called for a dense urban area connected by multimodal transportation. Land use policies are shifting to provide more people living in the city and Albemarle's urban ring. How would you diagnose the ability of local and regional government to deliver the matching infrastructure, transportation, education, public safety?
Thank you. First, I'd like to say that, you know, I had the privilege of, of working on the county's, several of the county's comprehensive plan where they started to implement this during my tenure as the transportation planner, looking at the transportation aspect, looking at the multimodal aspect of it, planning how those bus lanes would look, talking to at the time as the county planner with the city. And, and so I'm very familiar with that. And I know that they have continued to work on those plans and to update those plans. And of course, now as councillor, I've helped to implement the current comprehensive plan. But this experience is, you know, as a planner, I'm also, I have worked 25 years on John's board. So I'm very familiar with the rural counties and their connection with us as well. And those sidewalks and countless neighborhoods of working with traffic calming. So I know the impacts of vehicles where people want to walk in some different efforts and methods to address that. As far as education, I was on the school board for 16 years and I was asked to be on the school board because of my involvement with the youth in the community when we first have had the first school board. I love working on the school board and I was asked to serve on Virginia School Board Association. And I loved that. And I was, became president of the Virginia School Board Association where I work with my colleagues from the other 133 school districts around the state, where I lobbied for state and federal resources to communities throughout the entire Commonwealth. So I'm still very passionate about education. My daughter went through, K through first grade through the 12th grade through Charlottesville Public Schools. I know the importance of it. And my daughter got a great education. She just got a job as a civil engineer, all started at Beaufort at the time, Beaufort Middle School and their engineering department. So I'm very passionate about it. I understand the importance of it. And now in my capacity for public safety, that's, that's one of the main things that we have to focus on as leaders in a community. They have to, our residents, visitors and, and people that come in town to work, they have to feel safe. And so there's not a week that doesn't go by, likely a day that I don't communicate with the chief of police and Sam Sanders, the city manager's about public safety and the impact of that. And because of the history of what's happening here, the small events and other places are elevated here that we have to pay attention to it. So yes, I'm very familiar with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wade. And now the second question, this one's on economic development. The recent retail report from the Chamber of Commerce indicated a year-over-year decline in Charlottesville's sales tax revenue, both retail and internet. As a city councillor, how will you measure whether Charlottesville's recently adopted Economic Development Strategic Plan is having the desired results? And that question goes to Brian Pinkston. Thank you.
Yes. So I think that economic development is something that in the city, we need to pay more attention to. I, we'll get to some questions about taxation, no doubt later. A lot of the taxes that we raise are due to property real estate taxes, which is important, but I want to see more coming from businesses. And I think that having a strong commercial culture is essential to the city. What can we, what can we do to improve that? I, I think it's a wonderful thing that we're connected to the university, really proud of the university, there's a lot of great things with that. But I think it can be a bit of a crutch. I don't know that we have the same kind of passion in going after economic development within the city that I see in the county. And so that's something I'm going to continue to press the city manager on. And Mr. Engel with economic development. One of the things that continues to come up, and I don't know how much of this is actually based on real data, but it's certainly an impression that people have concerns the downtown mall, concerns Barracks Road and, and whether or not we are being as receptive to visitors in our community as we would like to be. The downtown mall is a, is a crown jewel of the city. It's, it's an amazing place, but it also has its issues in, it turns 50 years next year, I think. And so we're going to be investing money and making it nice and shiny and bathrooms. What an amazing thing to have on the downtown mall. And things like that. We want, we want the city to be seen as a place of economic vibrancy. I think that there is a tendency in Charlottesville to pit one thing versus another, these false dichotomies of, well, we can't have economic development and also care for the unhoused. I think we can do both and we, and we will do both. So the numbers that you've given concern me. I've heard them in city council. I, I am concerned by, by these numbers that you just have read. And I think it is going to take focused effort on actualizing the plan that, that has, has come up. I, I was happy to see that after ever how many years we've adopted a new strategic plan for economic development, but I think that needs a lot of fleshing out and I look forward to working with the city manager to do that.
Thank you. And now to Mr. Wade, the second question, I'll read it again, economic development. The recent retail report from the Chamber of Commerce indicated a year-over-year decline in Charlottesville's sales tax revenue, retail and internet. As a city councillor, how will you measure whether Charlottesville's recently adopted Economic Development Strategic Plan is having the desired results?
Yes, thank you. Yeah. I received that information on one of the committees I sit on with the chamber. And that was very concerning. And that's something, as Brian says, that we're going to continue to work with the city manager and economic development manager, Chris Engel, to address because we need a strong economic development, a strong business community, a strong tax base so that we can support these wonderful programs that we have, like the Money for Affordable Housing Fund and the nonprofit groups that, that we work with through the Vibrant Community Fund. It's, it's vital that, that we do this. I am part of also the Minority Business Council and where we want to empower, implement programs and things to help our small African American and minority businesses. And we're doing things when we meet monthly to address those things and doing it. So we're doing some very active things. I communicate with probably three or four shop owners on a monthly basis. I just text them and they text me about the issues and things that they are having. And that really helps me to ask those questions to the city manager, to bring up points and to help create and craft policies to have that. Those kind of personal relationships, those personal connections where they feel comfortable contacting me and vice versa. And some of them are struggling and to address the issues that Brian noted of unhoused on the downtown mall, it's a really difficult issue to address. And it's long, long term, you know, if you want to address it long term. And right now Charlottesville is kind of really the only player in the game where really not getting a lot of support from the surrounding counties. It's a very costly endeavor. But we're stepping up to the plate as a city because we believe that we can have the ability to address all of our community residents. I think, I like to think about it, the times, the times when I was on the, the school board, when we were implementing programs that will rise, all of our students, our highest achieving students and those students that need, need the most resources, that we didn't have to take one away from others. Everyone will rise. And I think that that's what we want to do. That's what we need to do. And I think that's what we can do in this community. Thank you.
And I'll read the question one more time for you, Ms. Fleischer. Economic development. The recent retail report from the Chamber of Commerce indicated a year-over-year decline in Charlottesville's sales tax revenue, retail and internet. As a city councillor, how will you measure whether Charlottesville's recently adopted Economic Development Strategic Plan is having the desired results?
I am not so familiar with the economic strategic plan that I know what metrics are already built in to define success, but I would think that a city council would define those metrics and success by how many vacancies are filled in residential brick and mortar businesses, particularly on the downtown mall. We could measure the amount of new affordable housing that is occupied because if that happened in business corridors or if there were, if there was capacity or change that could create small business options in, in nearby neighborhoods that was done sustainably and strategically, that we could measure the results of how much those retail vendors are receiving from nearby neighbors who have just moved. And we could measure it on the amount of new businesses and new business applications applied for within the year and measure their success incrementally over time. So that those new businesses may be online, as you mentioned, or not require brick and mortar, but if the folks running those businesses had the opportunity to live near other retail environments and landscapes that they could invest their time and money in, then we might see those results and, and be able to measure those strategically.
The third question will go first to Mr. Pinkston and it focuses on affordable housing. Do you continue to support the commitment in Charlottesville's affordable housing plan that councils spend at least 10 million on affordable housing, construction and maintenance? Would you consent to a third party audit of how the money is being spent? What are your thoughts of how the fund is doing so far?
Wow, that's quite a question. Yes, I enthusiastically support the work that we've done and will continue to do so. I'm proud of the fact that we've been doing more than, you know, been doing, you know, 12 or 13. In terms of an audit, I guess I would have to know what that means. I, I think that people have posed some legitimate questions about how much new stock is coming on and, and those sorts of pieces. And yeah, I'd be, I'd be interested. What I'm going to turn that into though, is a set of questions for our staff because I trust our staff to give us those kinds of data without having to bring in an outside consultant. But yeah, I, there've been, I feel like it is a good time to take stock, if you'll forgive the word, of our stock. And so, so yeah, we need to ask some hard questions about that. I think if you looked at a recent city council meeting where we discussed this topic, it, one of the things we came away with was we're investing significant money in helping PHA and Habitat and investments in, you know, projects like 501 Cherry. And we've, we're supporting CRHA. CRHA was in another place that was not in a good situation. We've made major investments there, which was a fundamental justice concern, frankly, given the situation. So we're, we're doing those kinds of things, but we've not made the investment in like people and staff and programs to track all those things. I think it's going to be interesting to watch. We have two very large developments coming on that were controversial, the Verve and the one that I understand is called The Bloom, which is near Mo's Barbecue. With those two coupled with UVA's second year housing initiative, there's going to be several thousand new beds come online in the next several years. I have to think that's going to shift the curve somewhat. And so I'd be interested. Yeah, we need, we, it's a good point. We need to take stock. We need to look at what we've been able to accomplish. I would push back against the Indian narrative though, that, that this is somehow just fire hosing money. I think every project that's come before us, there's been thoughtfulness that's gone into it. We've made wise investments. Councilor Payne often brings up a project, hey, you know about this? It's about to go, you know, market, market value. And we invest in those things and we keep it where it's affordable, which is smart.
Thank you. I'll repeat the question for Mr. Wade. Do you continue to support the commitment in Albemarle's affordable housing plan that councils spend at least 10 million? I'm sorry, in Charlottesville's affordable housing plan that councils spend at least 10 million on affordable housing, construction and maintenance? Would you consent to a third party audit of how this money is being spent? What are your thoughts of the fund so far?
So I'll first start off with the, the audit. So when I first got on council, because the whole 30 some years I've been here, I heard about what we had been doing with affordable housing, the city. And one of the first questions that I asked at the city council meetings, like Mr. Rogers was the city manager. I said, can you tell me how many units we have purchased or saved for? I said, can you tell me how many units we have purchased or saved for affordable housing with that money? I had several questions along those same lines and I couldn't get an answer. Because we just city, that was the chaos the city hall was in. They could not answer that question. And that's a lot of money to not knowing what was going on. Today, I feel highly confident that we can answer that with a high degree of accuracy. Because we have gotten the ducks in the row. We know we have the staff in place that we can answer that, that question. I feel comfortable with any audit that will, that, you know, someone wanted to get to address that. As far as the, the fund itself, I feel great about it. I think that, you know, we talked that we want to even commit to more. If we're able to do it, more than the $10 million. And that puts us probably per capita, definitely the highest on the east coast. Michael Payne says likely highest in the country. And that's a commitment that we have as a city council, that we want to keep this community diverse and affordable for all, whether it's for construction, whether it's for rent, whether it's for eviction prevention. And, and when I think of affordable housing in Charlottesville, I think about one of my mentees, that he finished Charlottesville High School in 2020. Brilliant young man, but he decided not to go to college. He works here in Charlottesville in the service industry, works hard about 50 hours a week, makes a little over $20 an hour. That's about $45,000 to $50,000 a year, doing pretty good. But he can't afford to find a place here in Charlottesville. He's still in Charlottesville renting a place now, but he wants a place of his own. And I'm working to keep people like this young man in our city, because this is his home. Charlottesville loved him, educated him, and, and he wants to be here. And that is what I'm working for, that young man and thousands more like him. So just quickly, and I know I just got the minute, that this is one of the things that's happening in Charlottesville. It's such a good place to live. Everyone wants to come here and, and we don't have enough housing. The zoning ordinance allows that more housing type and more housing quantity.
Thank you. Ms. Fleischer, do you support, continue to support the commitment in Charlottesville's affordable housing plan? That councils spend at least $10 million on affordable housing, construction and maintenance? Would you consent to a third party audit of how the money is spent? What are your thoughts on the fund so far?
Yes, I support the fund and the $10 million is, in my understanding, the minimum that we need to invest in order to actually move the needle on affordable housing. So I would again, support the commitment to that and reviewing that year over year to make sure we are meeting the standard that will actually make a change on the ground. And the third part, party audit, I would have questions about that only in that who's paying that third party? And what can we offer the transparency and the accountability that the audit is seeking ourselves? Can our staff and our teams continue to track our progress with the fund in a, in a way that all city members and residents know exactly where that money is being funded without paying for a third party consultant to do that work? Is that possible? And can you repeat the last part of that? Oh, I think the fund is the right thing to do and are the best chance we have of succeeding financially.
And now we're up to question four. And that question continues the theme. It's on land use. It's been over 15 months since city council adopted that new zoning code that greatly increased development rights across the city. How closely are you following the implementation? What sort of changes? Do you see the need for any changes? If so, what changes? And when would you seek to have them implemented? And that first question goes to Mr. Wade. Thank you.
I have been following it very closely. It's, it has, it was February 19th of 2024 when it actually was implemented. I remember that day. So we have, I think that a change of this magnitude is not something that's going to take place overnight. And I think that developers and a community, development community is still kind of evaluating the, the impacts of it. It was a difficult, it's not an easy process to go through. And that's one of the things that we wanted to, it, it wasn't. But one of the things we, we changed is that it's very graphic, the new zoning ordinance and easy to, to go by. But we know that it's increased property values. We know that it's had a change in, in the, in the land use environment. And that's something that, that we're aware of. We said it many times when we were going through this process that, you know, if we plan for A, B and C to take place, but it's going EFZ or whatever, then we'll, we'll make that change if we need to. And, but I don't think that we've seen enough of that to, to go by. Just yesterday, I, I got a question. We were at Jefferson School, was that last night? Yeah, you know, afterwards, someone asked me that they had, you know, a lot with a house on it that was rundown. And they wanted to know, you know, how the zoning ordinance would impact that. I didn't know exactly where it was. And I said, well, you know, it's hard to say, but you know, what, you know, I think that he was maybe looking to see if someone would purchase it or whatever. I said, you know, that likely developers are looking at lots and things that they would like to, to purchase. And maybe even getting two or three of them together so they can maybe take advantage of more of the density. So that maybe we can get some affordable units and things out of it. It's really hard to say because of the, the impact. This is the most progressive zoning ordinance in the country. We have other cities with issues like we had of affordability coming to us, seeing how it's being implemented, what's going on. And so we're going through that process now. We get regular updates on it. I feel good about it, but a lot of it is, is to, um, to, the story is to, to be told in, in the future. But I feel confident with it.
I'll repeat the question one more time from Ms. Fleischer. Land use. It has been over 15 months since Charlottesville City Council adopted a new zoning code that greatly increases development rights across the city. How closely are you following implementation? Do you see the need for changes? If so, what changes? And when would you seek to have them implemented?
I am following the progress of the zoning. The changes right now seem to need to, that, that might be effective are reviewing the process and logistics on how to move along the, the building of the homes a little more fluidly and with a little less resistance. So that is the job of government to kind of, you know, measured, take a measured approach. But we want to make sure that code isn't prohibitive to creating the housing that we need. So reviewing that and finding where we can create those more nimble parts of the code to, in a responsible way to encourage that development. And the, and really focusing on where we may be falling behind, which in my understanding is in kind of the lower, the folks who have a lower AMI and 30% zone and folks who are unhoused, using zoning to really move forward initiatives to encourage low barrier and other shelters and transitive and, transitive and temporary housing, as well as the most supported housing that we can offer for our lower income residents. So moving with a, with a little more priority to support those residents.
Question one more time with the question. It's for Mr. Pinkston. It has been over 15 months since Charlottesville City Council adopted a zoning code that greatly increases development rights across the city. How closely are you following the development, the implementation? Do you see the need for changes? If so, what changes? And when would you like to have those implemented?
Yeah, well, we always said it was a living document, which maybe is too extreme. But we were always, we always knew that we were going to be willing to experiment and to make changes based off of what was working, what's, what was not, what's not working. Fortunately, a lot of our progress has been held up by a lawsuit. That doesn't mean we've not been doing things behind the scenes. It doesn't mean we haven't been working to implement this. But that has been a, at the very least, a distraction. So hopefully that will get resolved. One of the things that we have done and will continue to do is invest in the neighborhood development services, particularly their staff that manages building codes and so forth. There is effort on the, on their part to continue to evaluate that document and figure out ways to make it more usable. We've had conversations that have come up about perhaps tax abatement for bonus units. If that helps spur development. I continue to be frustrated frankly with what I hear. I still hear from people about the length of time it takes to get a building permit and how long it takes to get approvals. I work in construction and I realize the permitting process is necessary. And some of this I'm only hearing from developers who tend to complain about of restriction. But I, that is something that I'm, I'm going to spend more time talking with our staff. Like, are we really adding value through this permitting process? Or are we just, we're just tripping people up? So I know there's, you know, two sides to that conversation and I'll be interested in that. But I, I think that we now, like so many things, it's, when we, when we came on board three, three and a half years ago, there just was not the human people there to do the work. And we now have solid staff, we probably need some more in that area. But they are doing the work. They're asking questions around, what does, what does this code look like in the downtown mall area? You know, we don't want to just build some big mega structure. We want, we want housing there, but we want it to be, to fit within that, that place for Charlottesville. So I think I've answered all your questions. I, I think that it's, there's more to be done. I'm frustrated with the pace. I think there are some things that we can do. I think some things, it's just going to take a bit of time.
Thank you. The fifth question will go first to Ms. Fleischer. And I apologize, it's a very long question. You'll love that. Charlottesville real property assessments continue to increase year over year, providing additional revenue for additional spending. As federal spending, spending is cut, do you think the city has a responsibility to make up for that lost revenue? What are your budget priorities? The Louisa County Board of Supervisors recently adopted a resolution to return some revenue to taxpayers after property assessments exceeded the amount that they felt they needed to fund the current year's budget. Would you consider doing something similar if the 2026 assessments in Charlottesville continue to increase?
Okay, first part, the budget. The, yes, let me validate that I do am feeling personally, the rise in property values and assessment. A lot of that is created again from what we've been speaking to a lot. The demand is high and the image is low. And so as we work to implement the zoning code and improve all layers of housing from affordable to market rate, the goal would be to, one goal would be to really balance out those assessments and see that over time. As far as a, a budget priority and repaying residents for caps on assessment, I think our, the budget, really focusing it on improving transportation and transit in particular, and continuing to improve economic security and stability for all residents, as well as continuing our commitment to schools and the facilities improvements, as well as supporting the Board of Education. The, beyond those priorities, the, the Louisa idea is one of many that I've seen in other, in looking at similar jurisdictions, that there are multiple ways to kind of set caps on assessments and stabilize assessments for folks in certain economic brackets. And I think it will take a, taking a good look at those that have the most evidence to, you know, produce the most stability and security for those folks and that without impacting our tax base negatively, would be something worth looking at. Whether that Louisa method is, is the best for Charlottesville. I would need to look more into that, but thanks.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. Pinkston. Charlottesville's real property assessments continue to increase year over year, providing additional revenue for additional spending. As federal spending, spending is cut, do you think the city has a responsibility to make up for that lost revenue? What are your budget priorities? The Louisa County Board of Supervisors recently adopted a resolution to return some revenue to taxpayers after their property assessments exceeded the amount they needed to fund their, the current year's budget. Would you consider doing something similar if the 2026 assessments in Charlottesville continue to increase?
Yes, so one of the things, I'll, let me just bring this up really quickly. So a fundamental thing that folks need to understand, if, if you've not been able to, to really think about this, is how few levers local governments have to bring in revenue. For every person that complains to us about their tax assessment and all of those things, which are absolutely legitimate. On the door knocking, I, I have this a real issue. There are probably five people who say the city should do this or the city should do that. So matching the expectations of our community, particularly Charlottesville, which is, has, is a high expectation community, with the, the reality of where we can raise funds is a, is a challenge. At the university, a million dollar project is not a very big project. In the city, it takes one penny increase on the real estate assessment to generate a million dollars. So that just gives you a sense of the scale. I, in terms of my priorities, one of the things that I would say, I'm not a management consultant or anything like that, but I've worked for companies like Procter and Gamble, I've worked for the university and in other places. From my perspective, the city government itself has been under invested in for decades. And I'm talking about being able to hire the best and the brightest, being able to pay people appropriately, all of those things. And so because I feel like so much follows out of organizational excellence at the level of the city and the people that we hire, I would say one of my main priorities is going to be continuing to professionalize the city staff. Now, we're not going to go crazy with that. We're not going to pay people ridiculous amounts of money, but we are going to try to treat people fairly. The other thing that I think we're just going to have to all appreciate with the change in the federal context is the fact that we're going to have to be willing and able to meet people's very basic human needs. We have the pathways fund, which has been great. I'm going to continue, want to advocate for that because I think we're going to be in a situation where people are going to be potentially desperate. And so both ends of the spectrum, then I guess I'd say my priority is that we continue to have a city government that functions well, efficiently, effectively, does what people want and hold people accountable if they don't perform. But at the same time, we're also going to have to continue to invest in these safety net type projects. And so I don't, given the nature of Charlottesville, we're just different than Louisa. We're going to take care of our people. And so that will, that's going to have budgetary impacts.
Thank you. Mr. Wade. Charlottesville real property assessments continue to increase year over year, providing additional revenue for additional spending. As federal spending is cut, do you think the city has a responsibility to make up for that lost revenue? What are your budget priorities? The Louisa County Board of Supervisors recently adopted a resolution to return some revenue to taxpayers after property assessments exceeded the amount needed to fund their current year budget. Would you consider doing something similar if the 2026 assessments in Charlottesville continue to increase?
Thank you. So first I want to address the Louisa question. I think it's, it's really difficult to compare localities like that. I think that, you know, we have different priorities and commitments than Louisa. We have many commitments that I feel like the residents, through various ways of input that we get from the residents, that we need to address. And maybe Louisa felt that they have addressed all their citizens' concerns and said, we're going to give you the money back. So I would be reluctant at this point to say that we would take that, that road. Because I think we still have so many unmet needs for us to, to do that. But I never say never, but right now I would be highly reluctant to say that I would, would, would do that. And as far as the, the, the real estate assessments, that's something that we as councillors, we don't have any control over. The assessors, they have certain things that they must go by. We don't say, okay, we want to increase X amount this year. We don't have any control over that. And so we, we do have a lot of programs that we And so we do have a lot of programs that we have residents. And I'm thinking this year, or emails that I got from a resident this year. It was a, you know, a wonderful elderly lady. She had been a resident of this city for 47 years. And she said that she loves it here and she wanted to stay here, but her assessment has really gone up and she said she may not be able to stay here. And so I was able to reach back out to her and let her know that we do have a lot of programs, whether it's based on your age or your income. It's a lot of different qualifications that I connected her with Todd Divers. And she was able to get, you know, one of those discounts. And so we do, we understand it is difficult and it's expensive to live here, but we put money aside to address that. And as far as my priorities this year, I think it is to implement the climate action plan, to continue work to make our transit clean with the, whether it's battery electric buses or hydrogen. I think that we want to continue to, my number one priority is really to come up with a long-term solution for the unhoused in the community and to continue to stabilize the government and implement the new zoning ordinance. And hopefully be able to cut the ribbon on the new Charlottesville middle school. That would be sweet.
Thank you. We have time for one more question, and this one will be interesting. Town gown relations. Councillor Michael Payne recently wrote an article calling out the University of Virginia for being the ultimate recipient of the Federal Executive Institute. I'm going to quote this. He wrote that "The university's acquisition of the Federal Executive Institute will have an immense negative impact on the students in Charlottesville's public schools and the town writ large. Do you agree? How would you characterize the city's current relationship with UVA? And what public obligation does UVA have to serve local communities?" And that question goes to Mr. Wade first.
So I would have to say over the last three and a half years as vice mayor and mayor, I've talked to a lot of neighborhood groups about, you know, coming to speak about issues. And usually their number one concern is the impact of the University of Virginia. A lot of it is particularly, I talked to Venable, Neighborhoods Right adjacent to it, is the solo red cups. If you know anything about that, they're, and they complain about that. But what I do is that, you know, I ask them, I say, you know, think about if you would pick up every aspect of the University of Virginia and move it to Culpeper, who would be here? And, you know, is using the library or someone? And, you know, most, you know, no one would likely be there. I know that likely my wife and I, we wouldn't settle here. And so, under the, you know, so I think that we have a current administration that understands both the positive and the negative impacts that the University of Virginia has on the community. And they're trying to address with things like the Pathways Program. The, the, the programs, the Equity Center, but I forgot, they have a new... Yes, yes. So, so, and, and, you know, their support of building 1,500 unit, affordable units. So they have tried to do a lot of things, but, you know, I know that the recent decision on the FEI is not, is going to, you know, push that, those, those warm fuzzy feelings back a bit because it was something that was going to be a great benefit to the city, to our students, to the Charlottesville school system. And it's going to be hard to recover from that, really difficult. And, and I know that there's discussions about, you know, that impact and what can be done. But as a city, we have to move on. We were planning to put our pre-K center there. We can't wait to see what else is going to be done. We have to plan for it because we, you know, again, we have to run the city and we can't, you know, wait on that. So I would say that, you know, I'm here because of the University of Virginia. I came here to get my master's. It provided me not only a great education, but a wonderful wife. And we have a wonderful daughter from it. And, and so, but when you have something that big of an impact, it has some negative impacts. And, and I'm glad to be in a position to help ameliorate those, those impacts.
Thank you. The question now goes again to Ms. Fleischer. Town gown relations. Councillor Michael Payne recently wrote an article calling out the University of Virginia for being the ultimate recipient of the Federal Executive Institute, writing that "The acquisition would have an immense negative impact on the students in Charlottesville's public schools and the town writ large. Do you agree? And how would you characterize the city's current relationship with UVA? And what public obligation does UVA have to serve local communities?"
I do agree with Councillor Payne that it will have an impact on the local school system because it was, you know, plans began to shift at least, you know, behind the scenes to envision that space as supporting our pre-K and administrative teams. I don't know if that will be a negative impact at this point because the FEI property is so tangled up in a chaotic federal discussion and there will not be a, an opportunity for UVA to share that property with the schools or kind of negotiate new space. It's, it's, it seems like it's a done deal. But that does open other doors for UVA to be a better neighbor and to support the community outright, and particularly the schools and the school board by offering other opportunities for space and physical structures and facilities that might support that same intention that the school board had with FEI in the beginning. And I think it would behoove them to take us up on that opening and opportunity and proactively move forward to show their support for particularly pre-K education. Pre-K education supports University of Virginia and their staff and professors and teachers and the whole ecosystem of UVA. And this would be that, their offering of other space and other facilities to move forward and support those kids would be, would meet that need and would be recommended. I think I'm missing a part of the question. Maybe not.
Public obligation.
Public obligation. Yes, they have a public obligation to do more for local organizations and local communities. They, they, they do some work in my experience, particularly with UVA Health. They are, engagement is a piece that they are working towards. But at their size and scope, they could do more. And I'd like to see them, I'd like to see a city council prioritize that relationship and that engagement to encourage UVA to step forward in a more robust fashion.
Thank you. And one last time to read that question again for Mr. Pinkston. City Councillor Michael Payne recently wrote an article calling out UVA for being the ultimate recipient of the Federal Executive Institute, writing that "The university's acquisition would have an immense negative impact on the students in Charlottesville's public schools and the town writ large. Do you agree? How would you characterize the current relationship with UVA? And what public obligation does University of Virginia have to serve local communities?"
Yeah, so I am not in a, really a position to be able to opine on what my colleague, Councillor Payne, had to say. I understand he has strong feelings about the topic. I think that some of the emotion there and some of the, the substance that he's arguing for, I think is right. This was something we were looking forward to, it was a great opportunity and it was snatched away. I'm also not going to opine on what happened behind the scenes because I don't think any of us really know. I, I do feel like that the current administration at the university has been willing and wanting to actually engage with the community in a positive way. There is a distinction though between the administration and the Board of Visitors. And ultimately, the administration reports to the Board of Visitors, just like the city manager does to the city council. And so the current Board of Visitors is a fairly conservative group. They have their sort of their own things that are of interest to them. And whether or not they will prioritize engagement with the university is to be seen. I, I hope that they will. I personally have been encouraged by the things that I've seen the administration do over the last few years. I think there's been real intent and that's what it comes down to, is intent. But I do think the FEI situation has complicated that and clouded it and it's very unfortunate. On the other hand, I think that the university has made statements that they would be willing to host or work with our schools to use some of that space. And if we could do that and they're still willing to do that, then I say let's take advantage of that. So in terms of town gown relations in general, what I will say is that the city manager, the county executive, President Ryan, J.J. Davis, they're having regular conversations. I've been sort of at the edge of some of those. So they're having, I would say from that perspective, in terms of like the human beings talking to each other, that is much better than it's been in a long time. But at a larger scale, more needs to be done. The biggest thing that people talk about, pilot payment in lieu of taxes. I agree with that. I think that that makes total sense. On the other hand, you know, I can understand if the Board of Visitors thinks that that would require legislation or something. I don't know the answer to those questions. But I think, I always put it a little bit like a marriage. You know, if you get into a point in the marriage where you're arguing about every little thing, as opposed to realizing you've got more in common together and you should make that work, then things are not heading in the right direction. And so what I want to do with the university is do everything I can to make sure we're, you know, we're moving together.
Thank you. Now, we've reached the end of our formalized questions. We are now moving to closing statements. We're going to start with Mr. Pinkston. Three minutes as well.
First of all, thank you all for coming. Thank you for this opportunity. When I ran in 2019, it seems like we were having forums twice a week post-COVID. There's not been many, so I appreciate this opportunity. I've enjoyed getting to know Ms. Fleischer in particular. I think that all three of us are public servants who want to do the right thing by the city, are passionate about that. So I think in that respect, the city is fortunate, you know. We're, I think, all in this for the right reasons. I just want to, you know, people's memory can get clout, whatever. Sometimes people have long-term memory, sometimes short-term, depending on what's important to them. Three and a half years ago, four years ago, the city was in a really bad, unstable, unstable, not in a good place. And frankly, it took some gumption and some courage to step up at that time, to be willing to walk into that. And I was a part of a team, not the entire team, but a part, a small part, but I think an important part, in helping effect a turnaround in city government. Now, we've got a long way to go. There's a lot of work to be done. I'm not saying victory or anything like that. But we've made a lot of progress in the last years and I think we are, we are ripe. I mentioned the thing at the beginning about the concrete crew. That seems kind of silly, but it's not. It's a symbol of people in city government saying, you know what? We've been trying to rely on these contractors and it's just not working. So let's hire our own people and get our own concrete truck and do this ourselves. And so I, I'm excited about now building on that kind of thing, where the intent of the people in charge and the professionalism of the folks in the city are such that, you know, we're all kind of pointing in the same direction. We now have the resources and people. We were at a meeting last night talking about resources, how important those are. One important part of resources is money and that's going to be a challenge. But I'm feeling really optimistic about the human beings that we have, they're going to actually do this work. And so I, I would be very honored to participate in the city's life going forward in a leadership level for the next, next term on council. And I would, I would be grateful for people's support.
Thank you. Mr. Wade, the closing statement.
Yes, over the last three and a half years, particularly the last year and a half as mayor, I have had the honor of welcoming tons of different organizations that, that come here for their conferences. And, and one of my regular spiels that I give, when I talk about Charlottesville, the wonderful things about Charlottesville, I also talk about that Charlottesville is a community that has both the struggles and the triumphs of the American democracy. And we're still struggling with that, but I want to be at the table as we continue to, to address that. And I believe that every day I bring my background to the table, whether it is mentoring countless, probably hundreds if not thousands of individuals, youth and young adults at this point, that's now in the community making a difference, that I've been doing it for so long and it's so good to see that. Whether it's my impact of working on different nonprofit boards, of the individuals that we, we work with, whether it's on the school board and that impact. I want to make a difference in this community and I believe that I have. And I love this community, I've served this community. And now I have the capacity, since I'm now a new retiree from the county of 34 years, I even have more capacity, more energy, more love to serve this community. And I believe that the community at this point needs my, my input. As the only counselor of color that's, that's running, that I believe I can bring that, that insight from that community that I have a deep, deep-rooted connection with, that I'll be able to bring it to the table every day, as well as my impacts, my contacts and relations with the, with the new immigrant community, that I was been able to help many of them find jobs, my work later as a career counselor with Alamo County, where I helped many individuals, if not thousands, find work in the community. I want to continue to serve this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fleischer, your closing statement.
Thank you. Thank you for having us and allowing us this opportunity to share our insights and expertise with you. I have a vision of Charlottesville that is kind of my guiding principle and what really drives a lot of the work I do to improve our health in my day-to-day job, but what I hope to bring to council. And I think we can live up to that vision. I think we should, we expect a lot of council and we should continue to do that as residents of Charlottesville. And that vision is city buses packed with people alongside folks riding their bike and pushing a stroller on a completely wide sidewalk that is full of folks. It's in Belmont, new neighbors and homes that have been in disrepair, getting the support they need to have multifamily dwellings. It's the refugee families that I work with for, in multiple fashion, in health and in stability, having their children really thriving at Charlottesville Public Schools and making new friends and neighbors that have also moved into their neighborhoods. And it looks like a beautiful middle school that we have sixth, seventh and eighth really outperforming any other school in the state. And I think it's not a lot to ask to envision this and that we can also envision a downtown mall that is thriving with busting at the seams with great independent businesses and tons of tourists visiting. And that we can support all of this. And it's our opportunity now with the great foundation that's been laid and the place that we are in, with a stable city government and a great city manager and a staff that is growing and collaborating to bolster and support all of the agencies and organizations that can help us live out that vision from council's place.
Thank you. In wrapping up, I want to thank you for coming. I also am remiss, I need to thank our timekeeper, former Charlottesville mayor Dave Norris, as well as executive producer Lauren Graff, and my co-moderator and friend Sean Tubbs. But most importantly, I want to thank the candidates. I often am quoted saying elections matter. Elections don't matter without candidates and candidates matter. Thank you for taking the time for your candidacy. And the candidates have agreed to hang around a little bit, so if you want to chat, they have a little bit of time. And that concludes our formal program. Thank you very much for being here.